Of us, we have Charlie and Mike. Oh, no, Mike, you're here. I'm sorry. Beg your pardon.
Yeah, Mike's there. Mike and Matt Lee.
Yeah. I just don't see my my picture there, but do you guys see my picture?
Yes, we can see him.
Okay, so there are five of us, just Charlie. And we're all ready at seven oh four. I'm gonna give it one more minute and then open the hearing and then you know, he can join if he's able to. Did he ever pick up his packet? Montana?
Yeah, he did.
Okay.
He's he's in the waiting room. I'm gonna pull him in right now.
Oh, good. Okay. And John's, I see, is coming in as well. Okay, so John is being promoted. John, how are you?
Good, Woody, how are you?
Good. And Charlie? I hope you're well. He's muted, but I'm sure he's there. Okay. So we will, I will open the hearing right now. It's Tonicohassid zoning board. It's now the fifth of December at seven oh five P M. It's a virtual Zoom meeting. And I will cut of the zoning board of appeals. I'm gonna call that meeting to order. And we have two pieces of active business hearings, and we have one, two, three, four different continuances, which we will tackle at the end, which is really an administrative quick action there, but the first piece of regular business is a special permit, which we heard a month ago filed by Robert and Judith Kaseymeyer for an expansion of a single family home, which does exist on thirty-four Stockbridge Street. And they've applied for a special permit under eight point seven B, that this is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So who's here to represent the application applicant? And I believe the applicant has revised somewhat the plans.
Yep, Christopher's here, and I'm pulling in Judy Caspire, the owner.
Okay. So Christopher, you gonna lead off, tell us what's changed since our November hearing and so on and so forth, and why you think eight seven B is the appropriate form of relief?
Yes, I can. The major change that we made was to remove the screen porch, per your recommendation. And there's also a
Any recommendations?
We only were saying that We offered to take off the screen porch. We've removed the screen porch and recalculated the numbers facade area, cubic volume, and floor area within the setback. And there was also a change in calculation that I will point out also that that improves the project, I think.
Okay.
If you'd like me to share my screen with the package that you've received, I'm able to do that.
No, that would be great. I presume, well, it's it's protocol anyway that you do that, but I'll start off. Montana, are there any people in the waiting room that would particularly benefit from this material on screen?
Um, I think just everyone in the Zoom currently.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, we will. So go ahead and proceed.
So here you can see the the first page, the photograph show the existing house. And it's the deck on the right that we are partially building over with a two-story addition. And the second, the first story wing on the left that you can see, we're adding a second story above a portion of that existing first floor wing. Here's the floor plan. Here where it says the word deck. Previously, there was an enclosed and roofed screen porch that has been removed. The red outline shows the existing house and deck. The light blue areas are areas of the existing house that are nonconforming, meaning within the setback. There's a triangular area here on the left. And this portion of the back, which is quite close to the rear property line. The dark purple is our proposed addition that's within the setback. On the second floor, you can see the light blue that's existing within the setback, and then the dark purple triangle on the left and the dark purple area on the right. We can see this in elevation. Top left corner here is the front elevation, the street elevation. Again, the two colors, the light blue is existing nonconformity. And the darker purple is our proposed addition within the setback. I would like to point out that there's a change in calculation from the last time. There was an oversight in what we were calling a right elevation, which is the top right drawing here. You can see our new wing is split more or less in the middle, roughly in the middle, with new and existing nonconformity. This light blue area was not included in the previous calculation. It was assigned to new nonconformity. But that is an area of the existing elevation is currently nonconforming. So our numbers the last time were higher than they should have been. So we've accounted for that and removed all of the screen ports that you saw in the earlier version. This is the floor plan. The first floor is on the right. This addition on the right is a sunroom slash dining room. That's the only expansion to the existing footprint, this area in, on the right, this rectangle. On the second floor, we're adding a second story above the existing first floor wing, but not the entire wing. So you can see this marking here, this is approximate setback line. We have this small sliver triangle on the left. So this corner of the building is closest to the neighbor. And we're trying to stay away from that with a fourteen-foot wide second floor wing above the existing first floor wing. Here elevations, this black line through the facade is a indication of where that setback line would exist virtually. And here is our revised site plan. So based on some of the questions we had last time, we've added some information. So we've got impervious coverage. And then lot coverage. So lot coverage we're taking as manmade pieces. And impervious coverage is the manmade impervious in addition to visible ledge. So there's a significant amount of visible ledge, including ledge under the deck, that would account for the impervious coverage being relatively high on this existing lot. And in order to mitigate the lot coverage, we're proposing to remove this section of the driveway, the end of the driveway, and have a gravel parking area. So our net lot coverage is actually reduced with the removal of the asphalt in this area. Yes, there's some photographs which we have here. You can see on the upper right photograph, the house that we're talking about is here in the middle, this gray house. The house on the right to the north, which is number thirty-six Stockbridge. And then this left photograph shows the house to the left, which is twenty-eight Stockbridge. And I have a key here. So here's our subject house in the middle, this long skinny property line, house left and right, and then forty-nine Elm Court, which is accessed by Elm Court, which is a separate street behind up the hill, you can see in the photograph here. We are not proposing to go any higher than the existing ridge. So we're using the existing ridge as the limit of the new work. You can see there's been a lot of work in the neighborhood over the last few years. Houses are very similar design, massing and volume in the area. And then I'll just return to our calculation page. So it's quite a small house to begin with. It's fifteen hundred square feet. We're adding five hundred and seventy-one square feet total on two floors. The volume within the setback, I'm showing here, our net increase at twenty-two percent. The area of elevation within the setback or the facade area that's nonconforming, the net increase there is fifty-nine percent or seven hundred and thirty-five square feet of facade. And the floor area within setback is plus forty percent or a hundred and eighty-six square feet. The height is also an important factor to consider. We have an average grade that was calculated by the surveyor. And the heights given here from average grade to the ridge is twenty-five feet. Let's call it twenty-six feet. So we're nine feet below the thirty-five-foot height limit, which was a deliberate consideration for this project. I'm happy to go over anything or answer any questions.
Well, I'll just raise two questions or issues, and I'll let the board really kind of ask questions or have you deal with it. The first has to do, and we dealt with this last time. It's really the amount of increase in the setback that gives some board, if not the entire board members individually cause for concern. We're used to seeing small increases, which would then comply with eight seven B, which talks about extensions, really stressing extensions of nonconformity. But there is no magic number that would translate a an extension from a special permit to a variance, but we have certainly been concerned about the impact on neighboring properties. That's one issue, and maybe you can deal with why you think this is appropriate from a special permit standpoint. Secondly, however, the way I read this, and I may be incorrect, but I'm reading that you're taking a conforming deck at which is at sixteen feet or something to the effect. And making it nonconforming by going up, you you get a waiver, as you pointed out in one of your plans of, you know, the bylaws say that as long as it's that structure is no higher than fifteen feet, the existing deck. You know, it's lawful, it's conforming, as long as it's set back ten feet from the lot line. And indeed, the deck is set back, you know, a foot or so more, so that's fine. But by going up, it's no longer fifteen feet tall. It's now twenty-five feet or twenty-six feet tall. So you're taking a conforming structure and making it nonconforming. And in our practice, and I believe in case law, that converts, that changes a special permit into a need for a variance. But maybe you can address both those points. So one is a relative increase, and one is a change of a conforming structure into a nonconforming structure.
Right. We were considering the deck nonconforming as it's over the fifteen-foot setback line, and it's somewhat more substantial than a deck on grade as it's a raised platform with a railing.
Is it? How tall is it? Over the average grade?
Let me see. So I can't measure on my PDF viewer.
I eyeball it, eyeball it.
I'm eyeballing it. So we have a graphic scale here. And if you can see average grade, this bullseye here to the deck. Yeah, three or four feet.
Yeah. And if it's fifteen feet or less over average grade, it's okay. If it's more than fifteen feet, it becomes a nonconformity because it is within the set, within the fifteen-foot setback. I mean, that's the way I read it. I mean, you can explain why I may be incorrect, but the bylaws pretty clear.
Well, we are considering the deck and existing nonconforming structure.
Why?
Good question. Because it is. Well, I don't. Okay, so I completely understand your position.
See, I think it's conforming ironically in that it's it can go within ten feet of the setback on that side, as long as it's not higher than fifteen feet over grade. And I think it meets both those standards. So from that standpoint, it's a conforming structure. But now, but by adding, by enclosing it, I mean, adding any height to it at all makes it a nonconforming structure, and that puts you into variance territory as I see it in the bylaws. I mean, I don't know, board, would you? I mean, I've just thrown this out. You can agree or disagree. Or ask further questions. Somebody's got their hand raised.
Yeah, I mean, that's how I typically looked at it. I recall I think maybe even years ago on Pleasant Street, we had an application that was looking to do something similar, and and we had the same type of feedback that it was okay if it was that close to the sideline and less than fifteen feet, but it was a different story if trying to exceed that height. So I would think that that logic is sensible.
Lee Darst had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I definitely agree with that it is an increase, and it does make it conforming to nonconforming. That was the issues that you pointed out I was concerned with. And also, by increasing that nonconformity, you're really going to increase the massing in that that end of the house.
And I recall our hearing of a couple of weeks ago on the fourteenth. We did make that we were asked, I think, or we discussed at least, the factors, why isn't there sort of a magic threshold number? Well, I think a lot of massing has to do with not only the degree of increase or the amount of increase, but the characteristics of the neighborhood it's in, because if it's a special permit, we have to, the it's really the impact on the neighborhood as much as anything else that we have to consider. And it's one thing if you're you know, kind of far away from neighboring houses in the woods or or large lot or something, and your house happens to be, just happens to be in a setback, because we're a town of old houses pre-zoning. But if you're in a very crowded residential neighborhood, as this is, that's fine. I mean, this, these houses were all all built a hundred and some odd years ago, a hundred and fifty, probably. Then the issue of massing becomes much much tighter, I think, or much more concerning, much more concerning, I would say, than if this were out in some, you know, wherever, Forest Avenue or someplace.
This is Judy. And I'd like to point out, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, sorry.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to point out that this is an eleven thousand square foot lot. And I'd also like to point out that it is on a hill. The back of the house is higher than the front of the house. So as we are talking about height from the ground, I would appreciate it if the Z B A in their evaluation of this project would consider the fact that it's on a grade to begin with. And when we talk about feet from the ground from the front of the house or from the back of the house, it might make a difference. Also, I would like to point out, if we can see the photographs of the neighborhood, we are one of the last little houses to renovate. If we look across the bottom here, thirty-eight, thirty-seven, thirty-one, what you do is you buy a teeny little twelve thousand foot farmhouse, and then you put a two-story wing on it and bring it into the current neighborhood look and feel. Thirty-seven Stockbridge Street, thirty-one Stockbridge Street, thirty-eight, that's what they all did. So not to mention the other property there with the two bay garage. We, no matter what, if we add five hundred feet to this house, we still won't make it to two thousand square feet, and we will continue to be dwarfed by our neighbors. So that's my spiel.
Okay. We're really not in a position to do an historic comparison and investigate all the building permits that were issued in the past. I'm kind of unfamiliar with this little area. There may have been zoning cases in the last five or 10 years on on your contiguous neighbors or whatever. I just but they also may have maybe in houses where what they were doing was added by right because they had adequate setbacks and things. I really can't speak to that, but we're not bound by precedent, but I don't, I'm not even familiar with the neighborhood in terms of zoning relief. Dave, you go back a ways. What do you?
Well, I think it's important to keep in mind that we are bound by certain things. I understand that the the house is on a hill, so it's higher in the back than in the front. But that's why the engineering and bylaw requirements set out what the grade is that we measure from. And on the plans, the average grade is about fifteen feet. So when we're measuring height, it has a constant basis that we measure from, and we don't have any discretion to change that. That's what the bylaws says. And I think Woody has a good point that it's a conforming, that rights, right elevation on the home is currently conforming. And you could build suppose a first floor, it's less than fifteen feet from that average grade and be conforming. It's the second floor that is the problem. And it's the problem by about I don't know, three feet or so that comes out into the setback. That's what makes it a non-special permit situation in a variant situation. And I think it, you know, the bylaw, the variance bylaw gives us very little, if any, latitude. Unless there are a whole lot of different tests that are met. But in looking at this just off the, kind of the top of my head, in eyeballing things, it looks to me like that dining room addition ends up being less than fifteen feet in height. But I guess that's the architect and engineers bailiwick.
Yeah, and I will, for the sake of of discussion here, say that I can't remember, there may have been the many, many hundreds of cases we've dealt with. I can't remember a situation where we have allowed a a change from a conforming structure to a nonconforming structure to be dealt with as a special permit. That has been this board's policy that when that happens, it becomes a variance request. Not guaranteed by any stretch, but the judgment call comes in terms of the increase in massing and and its impact. Is it more detriment significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's there?
So Mike, just to ask if this rectangle that I've just outlined in red is essentially the area of concern at the moment?
I don't know that because I don't know what the distance is from the base elevation to the bottom of that red square, a red rectangle.
Well, we could take twenty-six and divide by two. It's roughly halfway. So, you know,
Okay.
It's about thirteen feet.
Okay, well, that's under fifteen. So that correct me if I'm wrong, Woody, but is that conforming? If it's less than fifteen feet?
I would say the first, yeah, the first fifteen feet up is conforming as long as you don't go over any closer to the setback, and they're claiming no. So it's eleven foot or whatever it is. I don't have the yeah, it's eleven feet setback, I think. So that part of it's conforming.
Yes, it's that red rectangle that's the problem. And it's a variance problem, I think.
This does not dispense with the issue of increase in massing, but this is a separate issue and a much more serious one, I think, as Dave is pointing out.
Because your total increased facade within the that you presented was fifty-nine percent, right?
That's a lot in a crowded neighborhood.
You know, the other, the other thing, just when you explain why that's not detrimental, is just looking at the makeup of the neighborhood. And I do understand that some of those other houses have been renovated, but you're disadvantaged in that you have potentially the most narrow lot width in the neighborhood, you know? I just was calculating a couple of the neighboring lot widths, you know?
If I could sort of step back a couple steps and say that we are trying for a three-bedroom how, home. And what we're calling bedroom two is the area of concern. Now, it's not preferable, but I think possible to add a third story that is not does not trespass over the setback lines and get our third bedroom on the third floor in a height less than thirty-five feet above average grade. That is not a preferred outcome. But it would be an alternative.
You can do that as a right.
So the question to massing, I think we have a reasonable proposal to get a three, a very small three-bedroom house on the narrow lot without going any higher than the house is today.
That gets you around the variance issue. There is still a judgment call in terms of how much of an increase is detrimental to the neighborhood versus not detrimental. In other words, does it qualify for a special permit? And if it qualifies, or at least for that category, does it meet the standards, the standard really significantly or not?
But I'm
That part you can't do by right, but that part you do need zoning relief for, but it's an easier test.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I guess designing is not our forte nor our jurisdiction. And this is probably why. But I, from a a legal standpoint, I don't think that we have discretion to issue a special permit for the project as currently drawn. It seems to me that if that right elevation at a first floor addition that was under fifteen feet and a second floor addition that was within the setback, you wouldn't need any relief from us at all, except for the little triangle that you're putting on the left side. That would be the only new non-conforming facade. Is it?
Yeah, a point well made. Yeah.
Well, we, you know, we can't and and I know what you're saying, that putting a third floor on there is probably aesthetically less pleasing and probably less convenient in the home than having that bedroom on the second floor. But the problem is we don't have the legal authority to permit that.
To permit what?
To permit it or to deny it? What are you saying, Dave?
We don't have the legal authority to issue a special permit for the current application for that second floor bedroom that's in the setback. That's a variance.
What about the issue of of massing? You, I mean, maybe you could go over that again, say that.
I don't think there is a massing issue because I think if that second story bedroom wasn't there, there would be no non-conformity.
You mean bedroom number one?
No, bedroom number two. I'm talking just about the right elevation on the house over the deck.
David, I thought that you were saying not even the whole room. I thought you were only taking off the the little red box that Christopher.
Yeah, that's that. That's all I, that's all I'm talking about. If the little red rectangle was gone, that would be a conforming. As long as that first floor was less than fifteen feet, I believe that would be a conforming change. And you wouldn't need relief from us for that part. You'd only need relief for the left elevation. And I I may be wrong on this. I I would like to hear what the other board members think.
That condition is a corner, so that condition would exist on the side setback and the rear setback in that location.
Ah, I see.
Can you give us a pathway forward?
But on the rear, the rear elevation, you already have a non-conformity there, correct? Yes. So there you're just extending a non-conformity as long as you don't encroach into that right-hand setback. You could extend the the rear non-conformity with a special permit. And again, I invite other people's views on this because I'm not sure I'm right.
I had a nice meeting with Mr. Hallen at your suggestion, and I was curious if John has any opinion on a way forward here.
Probably a couple of points if if the board would mind. Again, part of the unique situation is a lot, the front part of a lot is in the floodplain as well to the the lower half. But again, the the rear setbacks can be expanded you know, over there, but it's a side setback above fifteen feet that the concern is on the right-hand side. I I believe the board's kind of stated that the the left-hand side is is not, you know, is a reasonable concern. It doesn't need a variance relief. Would this put you back in a situation where a third floor and then the you know, if you extend the porch to the setbacks to to add back to the porch and put a third floor on, I guess it's kind of where I'm at. I know it's a tight lot. The rear is tight. And and again, the side is 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 tight, but to the various point, I think they we we can't really swap the third floor for a variance and and have it have it work in this format.
Yeah, I mean, the, yeah, I.
Although it might make sense, it doesn't make sense zoning wise.
I I only suggested that because there seems to be a concern about massing. And that massing is a concern for us as well.
Well, you know, if we forget the fact or or eliminate the fact that you would on the right side be increasing, you would be actually changing conforming structure to non-conforming, just take that off the table. Then massing deals with the existing dwelling. And it's really a vertical increase. I don't believe you're proposing any change in the footprint to the rear or to the left side of the building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that's just a a massing issue and it's up to you to make the argument that while it's an increase in massing, I mean, you'd probably want to redo your massing figures anyway. If if we said, I mean, you're welcome to apply for variance, but I would be rather kind of concerned that, you know, that might be effort misspent. But if you want to deal with the massing issue in terms of the existing footprint, it's a vertical increase. That's where things like what does the rear look like? You know, if you're on a ledge or you're going up, does it interfere? Is it more detrimental to the neighbor up the hill? You can speak to that or not. Is it more detrimental to the neighbor over on I guess this baker's a number twenty-eight? And does it impact number thirty-six much? I mean, I, you'd have to make those cases, but I the numbers are a little obscured because you probably are not going to want to build within the setback to the right or the northeast side of this property is my guess. I mean, you might like to, but I I don't think you'd make the test meet the standards. I mean, Lee, how do you? Where were you in all this? And I haven't heard from Matt or, I mean, not Matt, Mike or Charlie, if they're in the but Lee, why don't you go first? Because I can see your.
Yeah, yes. I mean, I I agree that I think that's what struck me when I was reviewing these earlier is that that you're really creating a non-conformity and this is it's really increasing that, I guess, right-hand corner and the houses are very close together back there. And but I think a second floor would really would really create a a non-conformity for the for the neighborhood.
A better word might be detrimental.
Yes, I, I.
I mean, because we do have the letter that came with our packet and was also emailed this afternoon by Montana. The neighbors at thirty-four Stockbridge Street, which is oh, no, what is their address? Oh, thirty-six. Okay. So if we look at the houses to the right, it's where the patio kind of it kind of blurs. You can't really kind of see a a visual property line there. They're concerned that about privacy invasion, the new structures designed will overlook our properties, severely compromising our privacy. Okay, but if you eliminate the second, that that whole addition to the right, as Dave points out, they have a right to go up on the footprint. They still may be increasing massing, but not much. And then engagement with neighbors, lack of engagement. Well, that's a a different issue. We don't get into there are no standards that you must go from neighbor to neighbor to neighbor with plans. I mean, that's always a wise thing to do, but that's not a requirement from a zoning standpoint.
So this is Judy and Woody. We have discussed with them and apparently it wasn't fully enough, but also I would like to clarify what you just said. Because it sounds to me as though the first floor is okay. It's the second floor that's an issue. Are we agreed on that?
The first floor is is pre-existing non-conformity. So that is a lawful non-conformity.
No, I don't think so, Woody.
We don't? The first floor as it exists.
We're talking about the deck area?
No, no, I'm sorry. Judy, no, I'm I'm talking about the the basic foot, the the footprint of the house excluding the deck. But even so, the the deck as it is today is conforming.
It is conforming, so it's not it's not a non-conforming structure from which you can extend.
Right.
So it's, I think what Judy's understanding maybe that if the addition, the first floor addition was no more than fifteen feet high, that would be a conforming addition. As long as it's no closer than ten feet to the property line. It's the second floor, which makes the whole thing.
Yeah, it converts the whole thing from from a a fifteen-foot or less structure into a greater than fifteen. It puts it in a whole new category. Is that your point, Judy? I mean, if if you the existing house as it exists, including the existing deck is conforming. Or if it's not, I mean, it's non-conforming, but it's a lawful non-conformity because it precedes the zoning bylaws.
Right, like nineteen seventy, right?
Well. Yeah, but whatever. I mean, no, it it's the statute of limitations. It it didn't meet the bylaws then, but who knows? But it's, it's been around long enough to be protected.
Where they're.
That nobody's gonna gonna mess with, you know, the legality of that. It's 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 going up and and going over. That is a problem.
Okay, so what we're talking about is about three feet by eight feet.
On the second floor. I put a new red rectangle equivalent to the earlier red rectangle, but this time in plan. So I believe that the area that I've just highlighted here in red is the area that we're discussing. This is the second floor, presumably above fifteen feet outside the setback line above the existing deck.
And what's the setback to the rear of that addition? All the way over, I mean.
Five feet.
It's now five feet and you're, so you're extending the five-foot setback upwards.
No, we're at nine. The closest is five. We're at nine point two.
Well. It's so.
There's a, there's a a single-story shed right here, which is at the at the nine point two, which we're extending.
That's probably conforming too, because it's under fifteen feet.
But if you're adding anything over fifteen feet tall, well, I, no, Dave, I mean, you know, it's it's conforming to the side because it's it's more than fifteen-foot setback, but the rear is non-conforming even as it is. I don't think you could just go up in the rear. Could you?
Well, you can extend that non-conformity with a special permit.
Right, right. You you need a certain kind of relief, but it's a lesser standard. I don't mean it's an easy one, but it's lesser. I think it would be helpful to have you rethink avoid a variance is my recommendation, but that's all it is, is a recommendation, not a requirement. And then to show plans and and what it would look like, the amount of increase by extending an existing non-conformity, in this case upward, as opposed to extending it laterally, which is is what we usually see, but it's all the same. And we could take a look at the impact of that in terms of just order of magnitude is relative size and impact on the neighborhood and and the people who are going to be impacted are the ones at forty-nine Elm Court, I guess, primarily. Maybe number thirty-six too. I don't see the others, twenty-eight being impacted much.
So may I ask again, because I need to be clear, because we would need a true roadmap forward for how to be successful with this renovation. That what we're talking about is three feet. Three feet by eight feet. And so if we redid the plans and pushed this little bedroom in three feet, took over some of the internal bathroom there on the plans, does that mean we're done? I mean, we're talking about going up, which is what our next-door neighbors did because apparently that was what their options were, but we love this roofline. This is a classic roofline from the eighteen eighties. We want to leave it the way it is. So if you're telling me that what we're talking about is three feet here on bedroom two, just move bedroom two into where the washer dryer might be, move the toilet forward and we're done. Is that what I'm hearing?
No. What you're hearing is that if you did that, you would not need a variance. You still need a special permit. So you have to demonstrate that the new work that you're doing in the setbacks is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, which is kind of a subjective standard, but that's the special permit standard.
Okay.
And the special permit would be because of the nine foot two on the backside. Is that right?
And the triangle you have on the left side.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, well, that's that's like a done thing, but when you, when you look at these photographs, this is what people do. This is not detrimental to the, I have five more photographs of the neighborhood. And I'm telling you what, this is what people do. They buy these tiny houses and they put on a two-story wing, which is what we're doing on the left. And we have the gull house, two, two doors down that put two, two sides on. We have the blue house in the photographs that put multiple sides on. And then we have the people at, I invite you to drive down Stockbridge Street before the next meeting. I'm telling you, every house is a unique experience.
That that is, that is true, but a lot of that work was likely conforming, so they didn't need anything but a building permit to do it. And we very, very seldom have significant issues with special permits if they're, you know, not seeking too much. But I can tell you, one of the ones that I can recall denying in the past ten years or so was on Stockbridge Street for pretty much that reason.
Yeah, I mean, keep in mind, as to David's point, that your, the neighbors on either side of you have pretty good, pretty good setbacks. Number thirty-six is setback at his closest point to the lot. Well, it's not shown in this plan. I think there's a closer point to the front, but it shows twenty-nine feet well within the required setback of fifteen. The other one, number twenty-eight, is seventeen feet at its closest point, conforming. So that wouldn't have come to the zoning board, neither of these.
Woody, I don't want to, I don't want to argue with you, but look at the the two-car garage with the workspace above it. That's not twenty-nine feet from the.
Right, the seventeen is between the two buildings.
It's seventeen feet on the left, number twenty-eight, and it's twenty-nine. Well, I think it's less than twenty-nine, but whatever, number thirty-six. But but even so, that's why we wouldn't have, most likely, I can't say, most likely, why. Most likely, why it never came to the zoning board. Either of these buildings, I don't know when they were modified and so on and so forth, but. First glance, they probably were conforming. At least on this side.
Okay, so I accept all of the discussion. I hear what you're all saying. And what we would love to hear is a path forward.
One other question, what what do you, uh, Dave, just the, if they were to expand the deck. Uh, below fifteen feet. And within. Ten feet of the setbacks, that wouldn't be a consideration because it would conform.
Within ten feet or outside of ten feet?
Uh, ten feet or in, not. So if they would put a cupboard porch on the. The deck portion like they had before, that actually conforms, that they wouldn't need relief for that.
If it's under fifteen feet.
Correct. Just a.
But, but they'd have to stay outside of the fifteen-foot setback too, or the ten-foot, rather.
Yes, the ten-foot setbacks.
Yeah. So there's a, but a dual calculation.
Yeah, cuz I think the deck is at eleven feet now. A- and so that porch or screen condition is under. Fifteen feet in height from the average grade, and then it does, it's not part of the special permit.
I would think so, right, Dave?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't. I mean, as long as they're doing something conforming, they don't need.
They don't need a building permit. Okay.
So just to be super clear here. The existing deck, which is no closer than ten feet to the side lot line.
Right.
Could get a new roof on it, as long as that new roof and enclosure was below fifteen feet above average grade.
Correct.
Without a zoning appearance.
That's my interpretation. Dave, what's yours?
I agree.
Wow.
But if you were ex- um. Yeah, I mean, if it complied to the, basically what we're saying is it complies to the bylaw. You don't need relief.
Sure, yeah, I mean, that's ideal, that would be the goal.
And as soon as you go over fifteen feet, then the whole thing's not conforming. But. As long as you're under fifteen feet, it's totally conforming and you don't need relief.
Right.
And I guess the roof issue, I'm just thinking aloud, the roof issue doesn't come into play. I'm just trying to think of like. Lower Jerusalem, I thought we had an application.
Well, now if he adds a roof though, Matt, to your point, and and the, and 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 the result of that is more than fifteen feet in height. You'll lose your exemption.
Yeah, but you're saying if he added a roof and kept it below fifteen. We're okay with that. I was just trying to recall what the. I'd have to look up the case, but we had one on. Lower Jerusalem, I thought we were. A little bit hung up on the roof versus. Pre-existing condition didn't have the roof um.
Yeah, but that was a.
That might have been a lot coverage issue too.
Okay.
Don't they still have?
They have a lot coverage. Pro- problem as influ- as shown though with this little gravel cut out, right, so.
Right, but but you know, at least that's within their control. They could make, they could take impervious out and add. Pervious in to whatever extent to bring them below thirty or thirty percent or or less. You know, I mean, that's just a engineering or mechanical. calculation.
Don't they still need the second permit for the little triangle? On the second floor on the left?
Yes.
Yes, but that. Uh, you couldn't, I I mean, i- if that were the only. Increase, I'm just giving an opinion without hearing a con- contrary argument. If that were all that require, that required a special permit. That would be. I would have to suggest relatively easy to grant, because you'd have to, making a case that that's significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood. I, I don't. Know how anybody would make that case. You know, we would still have to make that finding. It's not a by right. But it's a, it's a. You know, relatively easy. Because we have to be worried, Chris and others, that is this. Change significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood. I mean, a little thing. You know, you're increasing something five or ten percent. By and large, you know, it's not significantly more detrimental. You're adding mass and a setback of fifty percent. Then I think it puts that into a different ballpark.
Well, our volume is an increase of twenty-two percent.
Facade that we're concerned with.
What is you're more concerned with?
Facade, non-confu- additional non-conforming facade, because that's what people.
That's what people see. But the the point is. That the the pri- you know, um, it's it's everything to the rear and to the right setback. That you're gonna have to play with. I'd, I wouldn't um. Be overly concerned about what's on the left side towards number twenty-eight. As, as depicted here.
I think I, I think I understand what what the um, holdup is here and um, thank you. Uh, the, did the cast, Case and Myers have anything else they would like to add or talk about?
We, we appreciate the consideration and the thoughts and the discussion that the board has given us, it's been very helpful.
Yes.
Montana, do we have anybody in the queue that would like to make an a. Comment or anything?
There's no one.
Okay, well, I would make a motion.
Woody, can, I wanna, can I add something?
Please.
Um, just. It's that little triangle on the left, if you, if you shrink that other bedroom out of the. Right-hand setback. That little triangle on the left is gonna need relief. But also. The back of that bedroom too, it's in the ex- where you're extending the rear non-conformity. That little section is also gonna need relief, cuz you're adding. Non-conforming facade there.
You, you're talking about bath number two or?
Yeah, bath number two and whatever piece of bedroom number two. Is in that rear, rear.
Or number three, yeah, number two or number three, if anything goes back, yeah.
Exactly, that section right there is gonna need relief.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh. I'd like to confuse the matter. Uh, are we talking about fifteen feet or? Uh, after the amended uh, uh, zoning by law, it'll be twenty-five feet?
Twenty-five foot, i- is a setback been changed in the bylaw?
No, no, the height.
The twenty-five feet, it has to do with an accessory. Um. Structure.
Only.
Yeah. The, the uh, house itself has got a thirty-five foot.
Yeah, I can see that. I was wondering whether that accessory structure couldn't be applied to this.
Well, it's not accessory. This is all part of the uh, primary dwelling. Accessory structure is. Always detached. Well, not always, I suppose you could have a tool shed or something, but. No, but it, but you know, the only thing that's changed in the height is, is. Uh, that the peak is, is now twenty-five, uh, thirty-five feet, not forty feet.
No.
I don't think they're. They're not close to that.
No, no, fine.
Am, am I correct in understanding that the, the dimension to the midpoint of the rafter is no longer used?
I think that's a pass at town meeting, right? It isn't, and and so, so it's valid, even though the attorney general's office is not yet. Ruled in its legality, I doubt that they would um. Challenge it, but what happens is, as you know, um, or may know. Um, when a proposal goes through, is first proposed, a change in the bylaws. That is um, takes effect. Um, it's subject to overturn by the attorney general, but everything. Unless that happens, it takes effect. So the overall height is of a peak, not midpoint. Deal with the peak and the peak has to be thirty-five feet or less. You don't have a detached garage. If you did, it would be twenty-five feet to the peak or less, but.
I had a quick question too. I do see on the lot coverage, right? You show a reduction on the deck. I'm just verifying, is that correct?
Um, you know, I, our in, our surveyor is not here. The, the deck is being taken over by the, the building area, so that I think that.
The debt. Matt, they're, they're changing some of the uh, impervious driveway into gravel or crushed stone.
Yeah, when you look at the um, lot coverage calculation on the. Um. Yeah, on that plan there.
Okay.
It does show. You know, currently four hundred and fifty feet, s- square feet. Of deck, proposed three hundred and thirty, I don't see the.
Uh, that's because this blue hatched area used to be deck and it will be proposed as enclosed habitable space. So the net deck area is reduced. Because it's being, in this plan, being taken over by the building envelope.
Okay, and that, so that's, that's put into the dwelling?
That, that's this, yeah.
Average.
Yeah, so that, the, that's, the, so let's call it um, hundred and twenty. Is t- being taken out of the deck and putting into the dwelling.
Okay. Thanks.
As Dave said, we are not design experts, but I'm, I'm sure, Chris, you and John Howland could sit down and just make sure that when you. Sketch out a, another version of this. That all the bases are covered.
Mm-hmm.
It's much easier for you and he to have a. One-on-one discussion then. When the zoning board meets, we have to meet as a group and. You don't wanna be designing this. Trust me. So I would make a motion unless.
How do you design an elephant, right?
Yeah. Good point. Well, I would make a motion that we continue this uh, hearing until January um. I've got Montana's. Dates of January ninth. Um, and we'll consider a revised plan, I, I think, I mean, it's up to you. Uh, uh, it's up to the applicants, but um. I would think that would be the way out. You know what our concerns are, what to avoid, I think, what. Might be some reasonable modifications. But I can't. I'll pine in that without a. You know, a, a firm plan in front of me.
Right, we appreciate it.
Give conceptual approval.
So we're, we're looking for collectively a successful. Taking this over the finish line in our next meeting, and we have clear direction. That what we're talking about is that little bedroom and three feet. Right? Oh, no, I'm not giving this up. With that little bedroom on the second floor and we're talking three feet, cuz we're not gonna revisit the left side again, right? Cuz I don't wanna come to this meeting in January and be told we have to come back again, so.
Yeah, yeah, I can appreciate that, but I, I mean, but be careful what you say, three feet. What we've said is that to the right. On that side. It's an issue of fifteen feet tall or less. And ten feet clo- ten feet from the lot line or greater. So there's a sweet spot in there, both vertical and horizontal. And certainly. You know, ta- and and that gets variance off the table. There is still the massing issue. Um, to the rear and that little triangle and um. I think it might be helpful to have certain visuals as evidence and uh, you could make the case that uh. It is or is not significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood. We haven't ruled in that yet, but. What you've heard from people is that's. The big, big. Bone in the road is a variance. You get rid of that, it's, it's becomes a, a different kind of discussion.
So if we eliminate that, I'm just talking about what we need to bring to the table in the next meeting. Do you need more photographs of houses in the neighborhood? Detrimental to the neighborhood, I thought we proved that this time. So help me understand what else you might need for our next meeting.
I, I think at this time, we would need you to work with John Howland and come back to the meeting.
Okay.
Um, that, I, this is. Um. Probably as far as we can go with providing any more feedback.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I'd make a motion then to continue this until January ninth.
Seconded.
Move and seconded, all in favor. Woody, Tidica? But I've heard from Charlie, Dave himself.
Hi, Lee Darcy.
Lee?
Uh, Mike Ticky, aye.
Max, okay, and Matt?
I, I got it, Matt Watkins, aye.
Okay. So move and seconded, so we will see. See this back um, and modify, okay. So that's that, there's nobody, we're not cutting anybody off, Montana, right, out in the.
No, there's no one.
Cue, okay. The second uh, hearing we're gonna have tonight is filed by Brendan Sullivan. Again, this is a continuance. And I've got to recuse myself. But um. We continued this hearing primarily to see if there was any submission. Further submission of data, so I'll turn it over to Dave. McMorris, and I'm recusing myself on this. It may be a very short uh, discussion.
Wait, I'm sorry, is Brett in there?
Yep, he just got pulled in.
Okay.
Hello, sorry, I'm here.
Hi, so we're, we're talking about fifteen Brook Street now?
Yes, fifteen Brook Street, the accessory um. Um, no longer guest house, a single family home in the rear of the property. Uh, filed on a special permit for nine eleven for working the floodplain. Um, I believe you didn't have any. Comments or any additional information needed to submit, that I needed to submit. We've since been to planning board, we are continued until December twentieth.
Hey, um. Do any of the board members have any questions about? The Brook Street application?
No.
And I believe we do have draft decision.
Yeah, Dave, let me just, let me just. Um. Say a couple things on it, just to be clear that. You know. Last meeting, we. Um. Took a look at this application only from the lens of. The um. Floodplain impact, you know? And I think part of that reasoning was back in, I I had looked back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. We had almost eight hearings where we um, kind of debated back and forth what the uh. What our role was, and ultimately we were advised by um. Counsel, you know, that. That that was our scope. I bring it up because, you know, I, I, I did watch the planning board meeting on this hearing. As well, and I think right when they got there, the planning board kind of said, you know, the zoning board didn't. Didn't uh, pine on this, and they kind of, they poured through some of the paperwork themselves and. Um. You know, I think. One thing that came up was like in May of twenty twenty-one, the S P in the table of use was changed to S P P, right? Which kind of gave the planning board that, that jurisdiction. Um. I, I, you know, even in the decision that we can review later, I, I, I kind of made. Made mention of like that this was only our purview, but I wanna be kind of crystal clear too that. That that's all we really evaluated this from, because. The planning board also has raised some, some questions about the plan, everything from um. You know, the, the maximum space of a. Uh. You know, uh, accessory dwelling is nine hundred square feet. They have some questions about the parking. Is there. Existing residential um, above the existing commercial. Space, uh, where does that, where do those tenants park? Uh, they had some concerns with. The second parking space being added um, to the plan, which I know Brendan was gonna review um. So they had questions that. This board shared some concerns back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty about the whole thing, and so. I just kind of bring it up to get it on the record that kind of our. I just kind of bring it up to get it on the record that kind of our purview was from the uh floodplain aspect only. And I tried to be clear in the decision, but I if if when we get to that point. We think it makes sense to put a exclamation on it again, but. Uh Caroline was at it was at that planning board meeting too and did seem to concur um. The other thing that that they found um. In there too was, you know, because the. Uh, Clark had 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 called out like note fifteen as well, that kind of gives them the authority if they wish to. Authorize a reduction of um rare. Setback, um, so I looked that up in the table of use, there's a footnote number fifteen that says. Uh, reduction of front or rear can be authorized by the granting authority, and in this case, they would be the granting authority if they wished to uh. To authorize that, so. Um, kind of a long way to this field, but I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page.
Yeah, I I do remember in two thousand nineteen that we had many hearings on this and. I think the general feeling was that that. The whole village business district thing was um. Supposed to go to the planning board, but they made a mistake when they did the chart and left single family homes with us. So they apparently corrected that oversight in the subsequent town meeting. So now the only thing that we consider is the floodplain issue. And all the rest of it is the planning board's problem.
So I think last time when we wrote the decision, we got a little bit more. You know, of our opinion in there on the on the plan, but at a minimum, we can send this one to the planning board so they know that we reviewed it for. This purpose only. Brendan did share that with them at the meeting as well, so they. They knew that, but I just wanted to update the the board on that.
All right, so Brendan, do you have anything you want to add to the? Discussion or the application?
Uh, uh, nope, I don't at this point, um. You know, um, as as Matt said, but I do have some uh revisions to get back to the planning board uh for the next meeting. Um, but um, I think they, it's something that it's this simplified, I believe, and should be. We should be, we should be all set, I say that, but you know, for now. So if there is a draft decision, you guys gonna, I know, I don't see it on the in a deliberation for tonight at all. Would you deliberate in January possibly or?
Oh, it's not on the agenda for tonight.
I didn't see it. I didn't see any deliberations for tonight.
That's my apologies, I forgot to add that on there, but. If the board would like to move forward, they can.
Does anybody else on the board have any discussion on this?
Not me, Dave.
Okay. Lee, Matt.
Fine.
Charlie.
Fine.
I I'm fine.
I move that we close this hearing.
Seconded.
All in favor, Dave McMorrissey.
Gerald Higgins and I.
Lee Darcy.
Um, Michael Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins.
Okay, hearing is closed. Montana, can we, can we move to deliberations if it's not on the agenda?
I don't see why not, I I'm just coming back in. But um, the way that this always gets advertised is and other business or whatever that the board. You know. Seems necessary or important, so I think it's related.
Okay, um.
I mean, it, you know, to from my point of view, if you if you feel more if you feel more comfortable being on the agenda and you deliberate in January, you know, that that's fine with me, it is, you know. It it's it seemed like a little bit of a light load tonight because everything else is continued, but I mean, that's that's up to you guys. I'm gonna, I'm gonna sign off anyways and. You guys can do what you do what you do.
Yeah, I think you guys got to wait anyway for uh. Planning board, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's it's, you know. Been a few years, I don't think another month isn't going to kill anybody.
Um, board members, what do you, what's your feeling, you want to talk about it tonight or wait till January?
I read your best decision, I I think I feel comfortable going forward tonight.
Okay, I mean, it's pretty straightforward issue and. And done with pretty straightforwardly, so.
Dave, this is Woody, I'm I'm gonna mute myself again being uh recused, but uh is it your, I I think it's a pro. It's within your jurisdiction, if you want to deliberate now or deliberate after we do the four boilerplate uh continuances, up to you, just let me know.
Um, let's do it now while we're on the subject.
Okay, so I'm muting myself again.
Okay, does anybody have any any comments or anything changes, additions to the draft decision that my that Matt did? All right.
I'll maybe add into it before I send it to Montana, just as just. Under tonight's hearing, I'll just kind of recap that. That I kind of uh expressed. You you know, that clarity that 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 this is what was being reviewed, obviously, that's reflected in the decision, but I'll just put that.
Okay, yeah, just add a little paragraph, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
People know we thought about it.
Yeah.
All right, how will we accept mass decision as written and revised as he suggested?
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, Dave McMorrissey. Okay. Lee.
Lee Darcy.
Uh, Michael Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins.
All right. Fifteen Brook Street is done, so Woody, you can come back.
Okay, I'll come back. Um, we have four continuances, requests for continuances. Um, so I'd like to just take them individually, um, three of them concern the same. Large piece of geography, which is ninety-four Black Horse Lane Lot D. Um, they have applicant has requested continuance. I would make a motion to uh. Accept the applicant's request for continuance until January ninth.
Seconded.
Moving seconded, all in favor, with each other guy.
Dave McMorrissey.
Gerald Higgins and I.
Lee Darcy.
Uh, Mike Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins.
Okay, at the same address, so that's moved and um continued. The same address ninety-four Black Horse Lane, now we are on Lot E, request for continuance until January ninth, I'd make a motion to. Accept the applicant's request. Second. Okay, all in favor?
Hey, McMorrissey.
Lee Darcy.
Michael Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins.
Okay, was that it? Okay, um, and the third continuance is ninety-four Black Horse Lane Lot seven A. I'd make a motion to accept the applicant's request to continue that until January ninth.
Okay.
All in favor, what do you check the guy?
Dave McMorrissey.
Gerald Higgins and I.
Lee Darcy.
Mike Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins.
Okay, and the fourth request for continuance is thirty-one Bow Street. They want to fill in a wetlands, uh, we haven't opened that hearing yet. So I would make a motion to accept the applicant's request to continue until January ninth.
Seconded.
All in favor, what do you check the guy?
Dave McMorrissey.
Gerald Higgins and I.
Lee Darcy.
Mike Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins.
Okay, so it's approved unanimously. Um, we haven't seen, uh, moving on to business, uh, Montana, we haven't seen the November uh meeting minutes, right?
Correct, I apologize, I've just been backed up on other work, but there you guys have.
No, I mean, that's it's um, we did get the October. Meeting minutes, which were, you know, they abbreviated, I don't, I mean. There wasn't much of a meeting there, um. It had to do with our opinions and review of the Warren articles. But um, I guess we could approve, did people, are people prepared to approve the October? Fifth uh meeting minutes, or do you want more time?
I was.
Same. I didn't see anything in there that was. You know, important, but. But if somebody would like a uh. Uh, to take a a a pass, fine, otherwise I'll make a motion. To accept the uh October fifth, twenty twenty-three uh minutes of the zoning board of appeals.
Seconded.
Move and seconded, all in favor, what do you check the guy?
Dave McMorrissey.
Gerald Higgins and I.
Lee Darcy.
Mike Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins.
Okay, so those are approved. Now, uh, um, Montana, um. Talked to me today, I haven't seen anything in writing though, Montana, but you've got a request. That I think is uh strikes me as um. Strength unusual. Um, and maybe you could give us a a a one minute uh crazy and on what their request is, I'm not even sure this is a. That they are on the right legal um wicket, but I I haven't seen anything, so I don't know how to react. Go ahead, tell us.
So there, there's no official request yet, but it would, it. Maybe coming from eight oh eight Jerusalem, it's the South Shore Habitats for Humanities Property, um. They are possibly going to um submit a waiver. Or um a wetlands bylaw, the reason why it was. So urgently brought to me is because once this gets waived, it they can start building, so like, once this. Is all said and done, they can start building the construction. I haven't received anything and I haven't heard anything from Noreen yet. Um, but the thing that I want to bring to Woody's attention is. Once the letter is submitted for the waiver, you guys have twenty days to make a decision. And say she submits it anytime this week, it only gives you between now and like Christmas time, so it wouldn't be a lot of time. Um, I suggested to her that she possibly submit next week, so you guys have a little more time to possibly meet, um. Nothing has been submitted yet, but I just want to bring it to your attention, um, if I email you to coordinate a special meeting um in the next like week or two.
And and I've I've looked at the bylaws, I I will talk to town council, but I I think she's uh probably. Incorrect legally, uh, the bylaws under um. Uh, twelve four, the the special permit waiver or variance waiver, what does she want?
I, it's for variance, I will say, um.
Did we, did we approve a variance for this uh? Piece of property?
Yeah.
I don't, I thought it was a special permit, wasn't it? If it's a special permit, she can't, I mean, she can't do a waiver and 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 by the way, I I think legally, I think she's off base. But also the bylaws say that whenever anybody has a request for a special permit or a variance. The zoning by uh, the zoning board has to. Um, indicate, they have to indicate the specific section of this bylaw, not somebody else's bylaw, not an environmental bylaw. But of the zoning board's bylaw, under which. You know, relief is being sought, and then the zoning board. Uh, has uh cannot render a decision. Within the first sixty-five days. That's um a special permit, shall only be issued following a public hearing held within sixty-five days after filing an application. So, um, and after ten days after receiving the application. Um, we have to give uh copies of any waiver or anything else to the Board of Public Health, the Planning Board. The Zoning Board of Appeals, if we're not the thing, and the Conservation Commission, and they all have thirty or forty days to respond, so. Where she gets this twenty day thing has nothing to do with zoning bylaws.
So this is, I'm just reiterating what KP.
No, no, I know, I'm not, I'm not, uh, you know, I'm not going after you, I'm I'm saying, I I I think she's. Uh, mixing apples and oranges here.
Um, well, we, Charlotte and I consulted with KP Law, and this is what the information they fed back to us, so I, I'm. Like ninety-nine percent sure they know what they're talking about, but this is just, I'm just messaging back what's been emailed to me.
Uh, I think Woody, the the relief that they're seeking can be done through the Conservation. Commission, because again. There's no change in the um. Footprint of the building uh location, uh, there is, the only change they have had is because of the. Height of the water table, they might eliminate, they're gonna eliminate the basement, it will either be a. A a crawl space or a slab on grade, but that's going to be on the same.
That that would never have been part of our our decision anyway, we don't deal with interior. Building, and I wouldn't want to make any decision that would potentially run counter to a Conservation Commission. Issue where they're the experts.
Well, where in the bylaw is the waiver? Provision?
I I don't think it is, there's nothing in the zoning bylaw.
Maybe it's a forty A issue?
It could be, I don't believe um. It it, well, first of all. We're not certain what relief we gave them, but I I think the consensus temporarily at least is that we gave them a special permit for that property. John Howland, do you remember?
Uh, I thought it was a special permit, uh.
Yeah, well, if it's a special permit.
I'll pull the decision tomorrow.
We can modify a special permit, but it has to, we have to notify all boards, there's no such thing as a twenty twenty day. You must make a decision on this, we have to notify. All relevant boards and the public. If we're going to do any modification of a special permit, we have to hold a hearing. I don't think we can do this administratively, we have to hold a public hearing.
Yes, you you will have to hold a public hearing.
And we can't do it without an application and plans and everything else in front of us.
And notice.
And notice, and there's, and the timetable does not start until all that that application is duly filed and accepted. So if she thinks that somehow there's a clock ticking without any paperwork, uh, she's sorely mistaken.
Sorry, then I may have miscommunicated, she doesn't think there's a clock ticking yet, once. If she submits this letter, she's aware that there will be a clock ticking, there's no clock ticking yet.
Right, okay, but all I'll say is that um number B on um, this is the old thing, twelve point four. B. Gives, says sixty-five days. That's the zoning bylaw, she may be looking at some other. Law, but it's not the zoning bylaw.
And there's, I don't know what she's talking about with the letter. As opposed to an application. I mean, I think if KP Law thinks that she can do something, it'd be nice if they would email us and let us know.
Yeah, I'm not prepared to set another meeting or even agree to another meeting. Uh, A, without an application in front of us, and B, without a legal opinion. Because the way I read it is that you have to. Um, notify uh all parties concerned and and the general public. You can't do this administratively or just in a. Forty-eight hour notice. It's a modification of a special.
If you'd like, Woody, perhaps tomorrow, uh, Montana and I could reach out to Noreen. Uh, and and at least find out what relief she's seeking, and then we can maybe give her a little clearer direction.
Yeah, if you would, and I mean, get back to me and I can, or or we can, uh, you and Montana, Montana can notify the board, but I I don't understand the legal. Premise here, um. We have never in my thirty-five years of modified a special permit without due notice. For the public and all the other boards and 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 there's no timetable. I mean, there is a timetable ultimately, but. It's it's not twenty days, sixty-five days or a hundred days in the case of a variance. And the bylaw is pretty clear that our jurisdiction extends only insofar as the zoning bylaws. State, so if if she is John and Montana referencing a non-chapter forty A. Issue, which sounds like it's probably a Conservation Commission thing. That's for the Conservation Commission to deal with, not for us. I mean, we may be the wrong board. But I'd at least like to know what she wants to modify in the zoning decision.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we can get back to you on that.
Yeah.
To talk with her, at least update you.
But I don't, what I'd like to avoid is, John, is a, you know, some sort of a knee a knee jerk, you know, hasty. Thing, you know, we organize a meeting for next week or let forty-eight hours go by and find that it's not a zoning matter at all. And and it shouldn't be before us.
Yeah.
And even if it is before us, I would want to have full. Public disclosure and discussion. But as as I just said, we don't deal with interior, so stuff really, I mean, our decision would be. Totally silent and whether it's a full basement or cement slab or whatever. So, anyway, more to be said um on that uh.
We'll keep you posted.
Yeah. Okay, great. Uh any other board business we have?
That is everything.
I believe also just to follow up on ninety-four, there's a planning board tomorrow, ninety-four Black Horse Lane, so I, I think. Uh prior to our next meeting, we'll have a decision on that as well.
Can you speculate in terms of are they gonna go for a subdivision, or are they still on the common driveway?
Uh I I think the uh, no, no, it's gonna be a subdivision. Uh with waiver, so uh. I I I think they're close to a decision, uh they'll have to make it tomorrow.
Okay, so this 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 may all disappear in fact by January, you're possibly. Because it may not be a zoning matter at all.
Right, I I I think but tomorrow that the. The 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 zoning application will. Hopefully to be dissolved and no need for it.
Yeah, okay, that would be. Official, the uh any, I I I've seen a few bodies wandering around the old Atlantica sites, does that mean they're actually doing something?
Yes, the permit's been issued, uh they are continuing to do the interior demolition. Uh they met on site with conservation regarding protection along the water. Uh I think the exterior, they might start the next couple of weeks on phase one. Um and then once they finish the demo, they'll start to construct, so that they are coming along.
Okay, is anything else zoning wise coming down the pipe that we should just? Have our antennae out for?
Uh no, I think you guys did the um. I think it was thirty Citewood Hill, that building's being constructed along the way. The other.
That one doesn't ring a bell, thirty six.
That might have been through a planning board, that was again um.
I, oh, you're you're talking about the forty or fifty units up beyond the storage place?
Yeah.
That was, that was planning board.
Yep, and.
You're cutting out.
So that's. That's moving along, and then um. This, there has been application about uh another uh possible storage unit on three A, but that hasn't been applied for yet.
Okay.
John, is there any update on Beachwood Store?
No, the permit is still in, but the it hasn't been paid for yet, so that's what we're waiting for before we start our review. Um yeah, I'll reach out to Lily. Um and find out where they're at.
Yeah, okay, well, if if we're aware of anything else, I'm not really, I mean, uh Chiaba's doing his. Mixed use down by the uh Saint Anthony's slowly, but.
It's so.
Slowly.
Yeah, I I believe they just paved the uh first coat of the driveway um earlier this week too, so. Uh inside is sheet rocked and starting to be finished, uh so it is moving along.
And this is a matter of curiosity as as opposed to jurisdiction, but. Has the um Olympic Texaco Station been auctioned off and sold to some other party, or is that still?
I know there was an auction, but I'm not sure whether they accepted the winning bid or not, I think it was. Put in for, but I didn't get the status on that, I just knew a couple of people who didn't. Who 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 didn't win the bid, so I don't know who won the bid.
Okay, well, anything else, board?
That's for me.
Okay, I'm fine, Charlie?
No, um. I heard that they were thinking of something quite different for Atlantica.
What do you mean?
Uh three separate buildings.
That's not what we approved.
Uh you're right. I don't know whether my rumor is valid or not.
I I think Charlie, I heard a similar rumor, but I don't think that was for Atlantica, I think that was. They talk about doing uh something to the property next to it.
Oh, the Mill River, that's got three buildings.
Right, so that.
Found the new lobster pound and the empty.
Yeah, because I've heard some of the same rumors, but I haven't seen any plans or anything yet, so I I don't. People like to talk, I don't, I don't know what they're gonna be doing there, uh. But we we kind of did, uh the Atlantica, they got their appraisals, they. We had a copy of the original plan and they maintained that same plan going forward, so.
Good.
Okay, good, well, I'd like to see the harbor take shape. Within reasonable bounds, okay, so I'd make a motion to. Uh adjourn, um if we um. Do find out that uh in fact we have to have a rush meeting, we'll do so, but we need information. Before we should set a meeting, I think, um so I will make a motion at this point to. Uh adjourn and um until January ninth uh at our next scheduled meeting. Okay, move them seconded, all in favor, what do you check the guy?
David McMorrissey.
Okay, everybody good?
Matt Watkins.
Lee Darcy.
Okay.
Uh Mike, uh Michael Dickey, I.
Alright.
Same to you.
So John, I'll hear from you and Montana in the next couple of days on this other one.
Yes.
Yes, we'll get back to it.
Whomever, okay, great.